Thank you. Mr. Suluca, can you allow the minutes to reflect that? We exited executive session as of 7:19 PM?
Yep.
No action was taken. The next item on our discussion this evening is part of our discussion session section. The first item is tentative agenda review. Mr. Hanky, do you have anything you and Mr. Suluca or Mr. Van would like to share relative to the agenda for next Monday's meeting?
I have nothing else to answer, but I want to quick point out that we, based on our conversation from the middle school presentation, one of the first steps was we wanted to get the OFCC involved. So we can go around the debt limitation rules. We ever want to go with the bond issue. We applied to OFCC with the CPAP program, but they recommended we go with the L program. And per Mr. Riley, he said that's the perfect right step to do. So you'll see a resolution on the agenda to start the process of applying to the L program. And that's the first step to get the ball rolling on our middle school project.
What's the biggest difference between the CPAP and the L?
CPAP is a where you go and you get bond term and it gives you the overall picture of what we're going to try to do a bond issue. The L program expedites that process. The CPAP takes a little longer timeline because they have to go through and do the assessments and everything else. Where the L, it's the expedited local partnership. So they said to get the ball rolling sooner, starting the L, we can migrate to the CPAP later on, but they want to get the ball rolling earlier by doing that. It would start with the L. And if we need to go to the CPAP, that just takes a longer process. That's almost like a two-year process. They said if you want to do this a little bit quicker, start with the, start with the L program. So that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you.
And that's kind of one of the big issues that we have on there in the. President Daniels, I wanted to bring the providers in today to talk to the Board of Education. With that, we would like to put through proposals on, after, we want their discussion first before we put them on the agenda.
Thank you.
I have a question. Approximately how many students will the providers be providing programming for? In fact, what schools or what grade levels?
So preliminarily, we're looking at, let not breathe, at our elementary level. Quite frankly, these are small programs right now. We're looking at 30 students per provider. You know, Quinn and I am, and reading around, we believe we're going to be important at our middle school for a variety of reasons. I may come back to the Board of Education for an expansion. I did want to get something started to see how, how things go.
What is the cost for each program?
Approximately between $25,000 and $30,000 per program for an all-year program. I, I asked the provider, Mr. Juve, to kind of pare it down a little bit to get things started and then kind of go from there for expansion. If we, I'd like to see, and we'll do a full, full court press for, you know, recruitment and things of that nature. But we, I do want to see, you know, how much interest there is. I believe there's going to be a lot, so.
And what bonds are we using today to these providers?
Yes. Yep, as was, as was Mr. Suluca and I did in our presentation.
Are there any other questions regarding any items on the global board meeting agenda for on the October 18th? Mr. Juve, do you have any?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Thomas?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Morrison?
No.
Ms. King?
No.
Any other comments? Would there be any, no more discussion or? Any other comments? Or next for a business in discussion? This Board of Education training and update? Can anybody attend and try and this one cover than myself? Well, I had the opportunity this month to attend the Q, the Q conference down in Atlanta, Georgia. Both myself and one of the district's educators had the opportunity to go down. The educator was chosen to attend with me because she is a part of the Equity Task Force. So we both were able to bring some very valuable information back from that conference. But I feel that will support our district effectively. While I was there, I attended eight sessions. And some of those sessions included events and student engagement with cultural responsiveness, cultural responsiveness and educational equity. That program in particular was very valuable. And I think we could really, the biggest takeaway from that program is they're actually a company that does PD for educators and they are educators themselves. And they really talked about educators' curriculum and just the district culture, being culturally responsive to the, the students that they serve in the district. And it talked about having that cultural responsiveness teaching in our school district who most definitely have positive outcomes on achievement for the students. The big thing that they said that if the, if the students can actually relate to the curriculum, then they will have a better opportunity to engage. So it was a very different concept. And it really was based upon just like community culture, school culture, things that interest the students, things that they are faced with and they deal with day-to-day. And intertwining those, those dialogues and those concepts in their day-to-day education will actually engage them better because they will be able to understand and be more engaged in education. So this group primarily worked on training the educators to be culturally responsive. So that was a very good training. I also went to Montgomery County Public School District and did an anti-racist system audit. And so they went through and did an audit to see where they had systemic practices that did not benefit all children. It was really good. My takeaway from that training is our district is ahead of the ball in that. And that we did our equity audit already. We were super blessed that the ESC did that for us because this district spent a half a million dollars for this anti-racist audit on their district, yes.
President Daniels, you were a little behind the audit.
Yes, so they were actually still in the process of completing their audit. They had not completed yet. But some of the items that they were, and I did, I don't know if I, I'm not, I'm not a sadie with Google, but I dropped all my handouts. I dropped all PowerPoints in a Q folder. And I thought I shared it with you guys, but if I didn't, I'm going to go in and make sure that it's shared because that was my purpose. Even notes and websites that I got while I was at the conference, I made sure I dropped everything into the shared folder to be able to share with you guys. And so, but they were, the areas that they were auditing, which were very interesting, was they were auditing workforce. They were doing a workforce diversity analysis, work conditions that cover progress and barriers, pre-K through 12 equity curriculum review and equity achievement framework progress. So my takeaway from this session, although we are ahead of the game with actually having our audit, but now that Michael Corrigan is hired with this district, there may be some of these areas that our audit did not cover that we might found relevant to improve student achievement. In particular, the curriculum review and also the workforce analysis. Those are some things that could possibly benefit us, the district, to look in and do internally at some point one day. We also, also went to a training about walking the top. And it was actually talking about using our strategic plan and our superintendent evaluations to determine accountability and equity. So just ensuring that our goals for our superintendent and our goals in our strategic plan actually holds pieces of accountability for equity and aligned with our equity statement. So that's how you can drive equity in our school district. Orangeville Heights was actually there and they did a presentation on how they use their SRR funds to create equity in the classroom. That presentation I dropped in the folder too. So it just outlines some unique and strategic ways in which they use their funding with the SRR to advance equity in their district. Politics of education, diversity, equity, inclusion, and a district's excellence, I mean journey towards excellence. That was by Dalton West School District. And I think this was the most impactful session I think I attended. They really talked about culturally responsive pedagogy in this, in this session. And it really kind of broke down. They had a disparity, of course, in staff. But the, the lady in the session, she started off with, she was an African-American woman. And she said, they hired me in this school district that had a disparity with African-American staff. So she thought she was going to come in and do this great work. She could relate to the kids and all this good stuff. And then she realized it wasn't about, all about what color her skin was. She said she had never had a day that she was hungry. She had never lived in poverty. She really did not know how to relate to this student just based upon her color. So she had to really learn the culture of the community. She had to deal with her biases around poverty and different things that the students dealt with in her school district that she was now assistant superintendent. So they really talked about through policy, how the, the board, their board through policy really set a standard for the district to be culturally relevant. So no matter, just in particular, Garfield Heights, how our demographics changed drastically in a short, in a period of time, that can happen again. But if we have a culturally responsive pedagogy, we, we, we will always know the culture of our students. And we'll be teaching, no matter who's the educator, no matter who's in our building, we remain culturally responsive in how we teach. And so that was a really, really good thing. And this one was all about policy. Their board established very clear policy on how they wanted this work to be done. Even the Board of Education Committee to continuous professional development training in the area so that they can govern appropriately. And it was, they had a really good policy and I dropped that in that folder also. We did a district leadership session where districts that have 15,000 to 10,000 or more kind of came together and pow-wow about things that they did during the pandemic. I must say, our district was on the upside on some things that we were doing. In particular, the biggest thing that a lot of the districts did not have, just globally, was I explained our partnership of Boys Hope, Girls Hope and identifying a vulnerable population and getting communities stakeholders to help support. Those students were having somewhere to learn during the pandemic. So just sitting in that room with other districts, sharing what they did to support their students and advance education during the pandemic. I have to give our heads, my head, my hat off to Garfield Heights City School District. We really was very competitive in that area as I said, with districts nationally. So we really, we really went above and beyond in that area. We had a great keynote speaker. We actually had Dr. May Jameson, astronaut. And she talked about the importance of really embedding STEM into our educational systems and really evaluating if, because that's, that's where things are going now. Technology and science and math and just encouraging school districts to make sure that those type of programs should be like a staple in all public school districts because that's where we're going. That's where society is advanced. And other than that, that was pretty much a synopsis of it. Everything that I got dumped in this folder so you guys can have to review. I do think the main things moving forward that I took from this training is that we most definitely need to develop an equity policy in this district. And it will actually give our superintendent, the staff, every stakeholder, even our students in the community, a clear direction on how we can embed equity in the district and give us all accountability in doing so. Anybody have any questions regarding any other trainings? And I just, yes.
I think other than just to make sure you share that folder with us, so we can take a look.
Yes. Maybe it's now. Google Drive is my weakness. Yep, so I have everything popped in that folder. There was some great resources and great information that we were able to walk away with. And now also in the folder, this one company, there's something I like, what is it called? Byboard kind of did a thing outlining some unique ways that the SRR funds can be used in school districts to help advance equity and student achievement also. If there's any more questions regarding that, the next item is our, get our after-school programming. And then I just wanted to put on the table tonight with the Board of Education, us moving forward and setting a timeline to start exploring our equity, the creation of our equity policy. I reached out to the OSBA. She's going to give me some information. I also reached out to Cleveland Heights Board President. Cleveland Heights developed an equity policy for their district. And he shared their policy and shared with me how they went about implementing it because we did have that question the last time. And just like we sat down with our equity statement, the board and superintendent and, and the cabinet sits down and we guided, but we make sure that it's, what we want is what the district had the capacity to do. And the superintendent's voice is very important in making sure that we create policy that, that we can effectively follow through with in the district. I also reached out to Al Long, which is, which is a leadership in the OSBA Black Caucus. He's actually going to send over board process. Actually, he's outlined a process in which on Board of Education's can create policy. And he's also willing to come to our district to help support and facilitate that creation in any way that we need his support. We talked about having a goal of having this policy implemented by the beginning of 2022. So I really think that we need to kind of establish the time to kind of go into retreat and get this working.
I have a question.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Do you have an equity policy committee, right?
No.
Nope, okay.
We have an equity task force.
Okay, okay. I thought they were supposed to come up with the policy and then present it to the board. That's not true anymore or maybe I'm thinking there's something else.
You may, or maybe a policy committee, but the equity task force, that's not one of the roles outlined in that, outlined in the equity task.
Okay, thanks.
I know that when we did our equity statement, we did say that we were going to get some feedback on this, on the equity statement from the equity task force. Because the board that creates policies, but we will definitely get feedback from or who.
Thanks for the work, Kate.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think that anything we're doing, anything we do that's related to equity, it needs to run through our equity task force. But those are some of the things that we're going to outline in policy. So we don't have that in policy yet, the function of the equity task force. And so that's where we're doing the work, but we don't have policy to align the work. And so that's where we pull it all together. Create policy based upon how we want to see it advanced, but also Mr. Hanky's vision for his equity task force and things of that sort and how it should function and what he intends its role in ensuring that we embed equity throughout our district. Let's go and clarify. Need box. So I would like to know, like, what month do you guys think we could get together to start working on doing the work with this policy? Would be something that's done right in here. Yes, Mr. Hanky, what are you guys casually looking? What will be a good time for the board to get together for some type of retreat to work on equity policy with the district's schedule?
Are you thinking of a evening thing, a long deal? What's your kind of?
I think if we could do a day long and work in a whole one, work up two hours here. And that's just my opinion. Manager, if we're looking at a day, just know my schedule, the next couple of months would be about, just know my schedule. It would have to be a weekend if we're looking at a whole day. Yeah, would have to be, you have to.
I would argue that trying to do something, if possible, for Thanksgiving would be super helpful. I know that everybody's schedules get very busy in December.
Yeah.
And including, including the school schedule, not even looking at it, I know there's various events and concerts and things, so. You know, but I would, I would leave that more in terms of exactly what they would like to look at.
So if we're looking at before Thanksgiving, the six is right before we go to Capitol Conference. We have 13th. And we have 20th, that's right before Thanksgiving.
The 13th.
Hardly the 20th for everyone.
My, my only other suggestion is make it like, you know, just, you know, going through these a bunch of times is try to make it like, you know, week two, week three, you know, just try to get something done, you know, and try to put a time on it. That's just my, my, you go to the afternoons, I'll, I'll speak for myself. You start getting a little fatigued and things of that nature, so, you know.
I agree. So what time did you say it'd be at? I'm sorry.
What, you know, it's going to start at 8:30 in the morning and, you know, see where you're at at noon, but it wouldn't go much past two.
Right. No, yeah. And I, I, Madam President, if you are able to send the documents that you already have, like those samples, if you're able to send those over, we can start chewing on it and seeing, no, I don't like this part. Yes, I love this part. And that way we're coming to the table with our ideas. And then it's just all about putting it all together. And we have a bunch of samples already that have been formed ever since. Yes, and actually Cleveland Heights was one of her samples. Also Cincinnati Public School is in there. I went to China about theirs and Mr. Hanky and his group kind of.
Yeah, if you want some other samples, I have, but I.
I just thought you were just talking about some, you know, I do work, gather your lead into this and pad documents that we can all take a look and be able to come to the table with the pieces and parts of the samples that we liked. And then that way we can at least start there and I don't know what the easy is, but to do it in our old school with flip chart paper. With, you know, I don't, I don't throw Ashley out there. I know she's good with time and as she's, as we're working and if we can project it and that way we're all seeing it and then we can kind of cut and paste and no, we don't want that, yes, and that like. Yep. Help us be opinions are trying. The 20th.
That Ohio State, Michigan out.
I think it's the weekend. 27th is this.
That's, 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 that's a deal breaker for all of us. No, you won't get anything out of anybody.
November 20th, we're a jerk.
I think we can do it really at the Board Office, all those, we repack that whole thing and be ready to go. Protector, about tables by there.
All right. Let's break it in.
You could have flip, flip chart, flip, protector, ready to go. So it's just right there.
So 11/20, 2021 from 8:30 to 3:00 PM. Be our board retreat to create equity policy.
You set the board calendar.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding the? Are there any other questions regarding that? We should, like you. Drop. I would show up, copy. Can we try to get that to more? It has about like five or six samples of that. Is there any other discussion relative to, um, the equity policy? If there isn't any more discussion on that item, is there any other items that any board members would like to put on the table this evening? If there's any more discussion, you have a motion in the joint tonight's meeting, please. So move. A second?
Second.
Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Mr. Juby and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Juby?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Daniels?
Yes.